Sort of kind.
Okay, 5:30, would everybody stand please? Pleasure allegiance to all United States of America. The true reality stands one nation under God. The universal will whatever needs is. Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the second meeting of the month. That's the seventeenth of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's our last meeting as Planning and Zoning Commission tonight because we'll be starting a new venture next month as a planning commission and then there'll be a zoning commission. So that kicks off next month. So, does everybody understand the hearing procedures? Anybody need any hearing or speaking devices? If you do speak tonight, please come to the podium and name and address for the record and speak into the microphone. Okay. So can I have my roll call from the left, please?
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Bailey is chair. Any changes in the agenda? I don't have any announcements, so everybody look at minutes. Any questions? Okay. And Cheryl, I'm sorry with this. I missed you.
National race.
Being quiet over there. Okay, so. When it's 5:32, our first file. And it's a little bit, our first file will be heard in the administration building, 1500 Highway 2, San Point, Idaho, in the first conference room. We'll be at Zoom and E2 livestream. Okay, 5:33, recall our first file, zone change 0003-22. Zone change Ag Forest 20 to Ag Forest 10. Galen Robert Howard requesting a zone change from AF 20 to AF 10 on a 20 acre unplanted parcel. Project is located off West Shingam Mill Road, Section 29, Township 58 North, Range 1, West Boise Meridian, Warner County, Idaho. Is there any conflict of interest? Here, would staff present the file, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Commissioners, good evening. Daniel Brett, planning staff for the record. We're here tonight to discuss a zone change from Ag Forest 20 to Ag Forest 10. Evaluation of Amendment, Board of County Revised Code 12216. Staff and governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Board of County Revised Code 12-320.1 guides us to the purpose statements of each zoning district. And the purpose statements for each zoning district and map designation set forth in the following section shall be used to guide the application for the zones and the designations to our lands in unincorporated Warner County. So this is the purpose statement for the Ag Forest District. It is to preserve, protect, maintain areas that are rural in character and in integrity of the forest woodland areas where viable agricultural pursuits can be feasible to avoid the fragmentation of forests and farms. That gives requesting zone change from AF 20 to AF 10 to have the ability to divide the parcel. The request was evaluated against the standards for the AF 20 and AF 10. That district allows for parcels within this district to be 20 acres or 10 acres based on the standards. Parcel will remain within its current comprehensive plan designation, Ag Forest land. Little background on this parcel, it is an unplanted 20 acre parcel that is currently zoned AF 20. And the comp plan designation is Ag Forest land. Parcel is access off of Rushing Mill Road, the Warner County owned and maintained gravel travelway. So a few environmental factors found on this property is map wetland. There is an intermining stream that runs through it. It comes from the north and migrates south. It does not contain any map slopes. Services provided to this parcel is watered by the Northern Water Association. Sewage disposal is a neutral septic. Fire protection is Northside Fire. Power is provided by Northern Lights and it's within school district number 84. So let's find on the property in the right purple. You see right here, this is prime farm land if drained. And then in the dark purple here, it's farm land of seaward porters if drained. These are, these are the current zoning designations in the maps. You see on the left, the current zoning is AF 20 and the comp plan for Ag Forest land. So these are the standards for which this parcel is reviewed against. Existence zoning, which is the AF 20. The purpose statement and the criteria set forth guides this chart here. So we look to see if the properties got the designation of Ag Forest land. It does. Primag soils don't exist on this parcel. Characterized by agricultural forestry uses, it can be. Limited services, no. Characterized by slope secret 30%. It's not. Access or absent to substandard roads, no. Our tract's land may be devoted to Ag Forest production. It's not. Criteria for the proposed zoning of the AF 10. Does the land have a land use designation of Ag Forest? It does. Doesn't feature the primag soils. The forest, Ag and forestry pursuits still remain viable. This parcel is within ACI as required for the proposed AF 10. It's also afforded fire protection, access standard roads, and other services as previously mentioned. These are the agencies that we reviewed were Rutherford Comments, Penile Health District, DEQ, City of Cooney, Idaho Department of Transportation, and Idaho Fish Game responded. Other agencies were silent. There are no public comments received on this request. Findings and facts are the same as the findings staff report. Parcel does not contain feature of primag soils. Agriculture and forestry pursuits remain viable for this parcel. Parcel is within the city of impacted Cooney. Parcel is within the Northside Fire District. Access to the property is on Warner County owned and maintained road. Parcel is comp land, Ag Forest land. Utilities are provided by Northern Lights. Power is provided by Oder Water Association. Sewer disposal is an existing septic system. And the parcel is currently zoned 20 acres in size. Conclusions of law have not changed since the preparation of the staff report. This concludes my presentation.
Any questions to staff?
I have a question, please. Appreciate your way. Can you hone in on that parcel a little more, please?
Sure, I have to.
I'm just looking to the north. There's a 40 acre site. To the south, there's a 20 acre site. To the east, there's a 41.7 acre site. And to the west, there's a 21.32 acre site. And then to the north and east, the parcels up there, are there a couple, let's see, weeks on, on the west side of the road? There are some smaller parcels there, aren't there?
Are you getting the view you want, Commissioner?
I guess what I was pointing out is one area I found to be a little bit odd because we've got some smaller acre sites. And part two, just across the street from subject property. So it looks like there's a little bit of maybe only four years ago or something, part of that section. I wanted to confirm that.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you're going to see too?
We're seeing what you see here on the screen this evening. You're welcome.
Any questions? Projects representative?
Josh Pilch for the record, helping out the applicant tonight. Staff, Daniel Exson working with staff report. I enjoyed all 15 pages of that. That was, that was good. Commissioners, I think they did a great job and laid out all the maps. And I wanted to address some of the, some of the comments in those, in the comments that did come in from the different agencies. Cooney City was one. And it talked about the area of city impact. And the comment in that was that this, this zone change is in line with their city, their area of city impact. And that it is in line with what they want to see in that area. And I, I think what's additionally important, as Daniel laid out, is that this area, that the comprehensive plan, that the county has laid out, that this zone change would be in line with the comprehensive plan. Some of the other things that were mentioned were the wetland area. And as you can see on the map there, there is, there is some drainage that comes through there that is seasonal and because it is wet. It's wetland. But when I mapped out the amount of acreage that is actually qualifies as wetland on this property, it was less than a half an acre. And when you think about a half an acre on that 20 acre parcel, or even a half an acre on, on a 10 acre parcel, that's not a lot of wetlands. Especially where it's seasonally, seasonal drainage in that area. Meaning it's going to dry out towards the middle or late, late summer. As Daniel mentioned, no slopes in that area other than these drainages that we see passing through the property. I thought it was interesting that, that in the staff report that Daniel had sent out, he had noticed 17 agencies. We had five responses and we had three comments. Clearly, there wasn't a lot of issues that those, those agencies didn't, nothing, nothing popped up on their radar that they wanted to mention or felt like this was out of line. So those are just a few things that I, I wanted to share. And I'll certainly take any questions if you have them.
Questions of the applicants representatives? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment in the room is you have three minutes. If someone's with you, they can give you your three minutes. And keep your remarks to the file only, please. So anybody wish to say something publicly about this file? Anybody online?
Yeah, nobody attended.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and open it up for commissioners deliberations and a motion.
I just have a few comments in going over the application. And I think this is not the only one, I think. I, we, as a committee, at times, I don't take enough time, time to read exactly what's here. And all, and there were just a lot of details that we left out. And that with this file, I don't have that much of a concern, but some of the files, if it had been explained a little bit better, because going through this, it doesn't exactly tell why, little purposes. Exactly, you're right. Just my pink lines here lacked information that we really should have when they come in. And this, to be split, will addition, will allow for additional housing. But yet no other comment. And on the other part, it says list what's there and dimensions and things like that. And it just says residential. And I noticed more of this. While I was looking at the last file we're going to be looking at today, and it was so detailed, that it really makes you come back and take another look at what's here or what's not here. I mean, with this one, we can pretty well see. But I'm just not sure that isn't here. It just skipped over and things are put in. We need more detail on some of this. That, that was my feeling on it. I believe with you, we probably shouldn't let stuff.
Is that, that's on the application?
This is the application.
Yeah. Well, I think we're, we're up against the same issue as we've had many discussions in the last two or three years. This is a zone change application. There's no specific definition, description of what's to follow. And there isn't any requirement to have that. So there's, there's things afoot to change that. But right now, for this application, anyway, no, it's just, it was divulged what the intent was, that so it could be joined with the adjacent property. But it's, beyond that, there's no description of what that would result in. And it's a little, we've all commented on that before, that that seems a little short. Because it doesn't. We, but we've been told and so forth that we can't get into that. There's no, there's no code to help us to get into that. Maybe it will be in the near future, but right now there isn't.
But if we read the application, it asks for a lot of that.
Well, it does, I know, and that's part of our argument. And even, even Section 211 and Title 12 says that we can ask for more, but it's a, it's kind of a, the way it's been explained to us, it's a groundless request because they don't have to provide that.
Well, here it says existing structure, size and use.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we don't, just putting down residential and agricultural buildings. Either something needs changed down the road today, whenever.
Yeah.
But.
And even at that, I wonder, so if we had a site plan that showed the barn and the houses and the old buildings and everything, so what? So what would it gain us? I don't know what that would gain us, really. Because in, in other cases where you're proposing something, then you have to show a site plan that has where everything relocated, so you can look at setbacks. But just to show what's on the property now, it's all there. There's no, for what, what's the value of showing that?
Well.
Yeah, even though it says it's.
But I think we've been at this for so long, you'll see too.
Right, true. It'll be something for the new zoning commission.
Yeah, right. True enough. It would appear that this application rests, once again, like so many have in the past, on the zone descriptions, Ag Forest 10 versus Ag Forest 20. As was stated, the, the comp plan designation of Ag Forest remains in place. There's no desire to change that. Not to go to residential or something. And therefore it allows either a 10 or 20, and the descriptions of a 10 or 20, it's clearly fits in a 10. All around it is 20s plus, and there's some in the area that are less than 20. Up there in the northeast, and some down to the north, well, to the far west and so forth. But yeah, this has been a, I mean, it's, we're, we're once again faced with, and I probably should have asked the applicant or the representative when, when we had the chance about the use of the property, because it certainly appears that the westerly half, or roughly 10 acres, has been used for agricultural pursuits. And the easterly half or so may very well have been forestry pursuits. Kind of got trees on it, as you can see in the picture. So there it is, you know, it's, it's, it's in the, in the area being used, so. But we can't, we can't go to the future.
Right, and we're going back to 12.322, you know, with some of this. Don, you know, from back, so you guys, yeah.
So commissioners, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Commissioners, can you hear me?
If I were a little closer. What it was doing, you know, some of this movie would have been.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Oh, what other, you got a lot of things marked there. What other information do you think would have been?
Our wetlands present source of information, which she, which she gave us. Other pertinent information, attached additional pages of need. Structure, size and use. And then explain water source capacity, system maintenance, plant storage and delivery system, and other detail. You know, I mean, some of that is too detailed when he's got probably Northern Water.
Yeah, Northern Water.
And then to probably be too detailed. And then to probably be too detailed.
See applicant representatives here this evening? Yes. Would you like to say something, sir?
Oh, we mainly put them in for use of our parents. And now we're fighting out the state where they have to do the system.
Get your name and address for the record.
Joey Fitzmorris, three seven one seven six nine four one.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask Mr. Fitzmorris a question. So you just said for your parents predominantly.
My dad's and one of her mother's. And we put the third one in for our son. He says purchase of house, so he wasn't used. So he has other friends that he can stay with.
Yeah, that was the gist of the question. What are you seeing for people needing a place?
So my father and her mother, so long as they're back and forth, it's just going to be around here now.
Yeah. As was stated, the whole housing thing is in dire straits in the county and looking for places for people to be. And just wondered if you had any new queries about.
Basically, the one spot we let the kids have to rent there for a year. But the other two, we did let some brands move in for one this winter because they had some places to go.
Yeah.
But they're moving out next month because their father will be coming back.
So. Yeah, that's sort of getting at, you know, what are you hearing? Yeah, yeah, it's just that's the way it is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any other questions?
Thank you.
Close that. Anybody online wish to comment? Please don't have anybody online. Okay, anybody in the audience wish to comment? Okay, we'll close it and open it up for Commissioner's deliberations and motions.
So Commissioner.
Yes, sir, I would answer your question. So a one acre parcel of shared land is allowed that single family dwelling, making you a one acre.
It's just the one acre.
But nevertheless, three against each.
It's kind of what I'm looking at. It's we're in a straight trade up basically.
I want the condition on this permit. You can put any conditions on the.
No, it just shows you that there's need in the county. This is the affordable housing is not going to happen. We have to start looking at different avenues for the market.
And this has been existing since the school. It's technically got revision from in and out.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Reed, I move to approve this project file CUP zero zero two eight dash two one, request to operate an RV park not to exceed three RV units on one acre parcel, finding that it is in accord with the general specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
And we're admitting being free.
As amended.
Yeah. Because he put that in already, didn't he? Okay. As set forth in the staff report or and we don't have any amended amendments.
As amended, we amended those two.
Okay, put that in there, whatever.
As amended.
As amended. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a private property.
Commissioner Reed has made a motion to approve file CUP zero two eight dash two one, RV Bart John and Randy Fitzmorris. Is there a second?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Case with a second, any discussion? Hearing that on, so we're put say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Hey, everybody all right? We can move on to the next file here. Okay, it's six fourteen. Our next file is file MOD zero zero one zero dash two one, conditional use permit modification. Spire's PUD is requested to modify the conditional use permit for the Spire's plan unit development. They add note four to the condition eight seven item C setbacks to file C eight nine two dash zero seven to include the following. Four authorization to deviate further from the standard shall be approved by the homeowners association board of directors on a case by case basis. This project is located in a portion of the S one slash two of the SW one slash four and SW one, excuse me, and S one slash two of N one dash two of SW, which is number one dash four, section twenty, township eight more, range two west, Boise, Meridian, higher county. Wait, please. Nope. Okay, go ahead, Stan.
Great. Thanks again, Brian. And again, for those of the public who's been here, we're here tonight to discuss a planning and development modification of Spire's PUD up at Switzer. And this is the site plan the applicant submitted. Again, they're looking to add a note to the conditions allowing for deviations from the homeowners association from required setbacks at their discretion on a case by case basis. It's in the Alpine Community Comprehensive Land Use Plan designation. It's its own Alpine village. Accesses by privately owned and maintained roads. Services on site include mountain utility, Spire's water, Switzer fire, Northern Lights for power, and it's in Lake Ponderay School District eighty four. And as we could see, there's quite a bit of slope up there. There are a few different types of soils in this planning development. Probably going to say this wrong, giving me an advanced footy gravelly Ashley home, forgotten gravelly home, base it home, geru gravelly home, gravelly home. Kind of a mix between essentially all not prime farmland. The site was evaluated for flood plain. It was found to be in zone X and zone D, which essentially means zone X again, one in five hundred year risk of flooding, very minimal. Zone D means it's not studied, so it's kind of the risk of flooding is unknown. More for the flood plain was required for this project because again, we're not looking at building structures, we're not looking at, you know, putting in lots right now. And we're just looking at modifying conditions for setbacks. These were the conditions, the file was reviewed for in the revised code. Again, tonight, we're here for the commission to review the particular facts and circumstances of this proposal. And this is kind of just laying out stash review, the modifications of terms for conditional use permits. So the applicant wrote that they're requesting this modification to essentially change the PUD conditions as mentioned, allowing for discretion from the homeowners association. Staff found that, you know, planning developments in general are in essence, they're on zoning. It's not unusual for a PUD to be altered. But Spire's PUD has actually been modified back in twenty twenty one, I believe. And the department is going to require that the homeowners association, when we're deviating from further from the existing established setbacks, that the homeowners association provide the planning department with a letter basically saying, hey, we've approved this deviation at the time in which someone applies for building location permit. So that'll kind of verify that process for us and give us that certainty. The conditions, the reasons for the modification, again, we're looking at the area with extremely steep slopes. And there can certainly be limitations with that. And also the building envelope, particularly as it relates to snow storage. And so staff found that the applicant's request for the modification and reason is indeed reasonable, given the slope and the snow storage. Again, requiring that letter from the homeowners association gives us that assurance that that is okay. Again, we don't see any adverse impacts to the public with this. And the planning department's not going to approve any specific request to encroach over property. We will require a lot line adjustment or boundary adjustment as appropriate so that we're not building structures or needs or anything of that nature over property lines. So we did route this file to the relevant agencies on screen here. Independent Highway District said that Spire's has its own private roads. We don't have jurisdiction over them. Paranormal Health. I actually got two comments from them. The first one just spoke to the properties in the Spire's PUD that they've evaluated for septic. And then the second comment was basically saying that they're unsure as to what this request is for in terms of the setback. And basically, hey, this better not be for septic or you guys are in trouble. Which it's not, so no worries there. Fishing game said they don't have any comments to submit for the application and all the other agencies did not respond. I would note, we didn't receive any public comments in opposition of this project. Staff did find that this project is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code. Request is reasonable and we are recommending approval with conditions. And those conditions are as follows, kind of standard, that the modification shall not supersede any due restrictions. They have to obtain this modification within two years. And that essentially that they provide that letter from the homeowners association when they're going to deviate from those required setbacks. And finally, that they won't allow anything to kind of encroach on another property. And honestly, that condition is almost there as with a reminder. So at this time, I can take any questions.
Questions, Stan? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. J. Sam.
Rich Martin, I'm the president of the homeowners association. Thirty lower Wyman Way, Seale Point, Idaho, in Spire's. Just one quick one, because I see a lot of questions on the previous ones of why is this being done? Well, the why is real simple. Some of the lots have common areas beside them and some of the lots have common lot lines. Where they have common lot lines, we need to keep more setback so the houses don't dump snow on each other. Where there would be a common area that they can dump snow into, we will let them get closer to the property line because they're not going to infringe on another home. There's the why. That's all I have.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, so both that force no good, public comment, anybody in the room wish to speak? Ain't none anybody online? No, saying none and we'll close that and we'll end up for Commissioner's deliberations and motion. It's pretty strange.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, there's no question about that. And that is an interesting aspect of this of the Spire's where there are lots that are adjacent to open space and some that aren't. So to rather than painting with one brush or one scraper, shall we say? Yeah, it makes sense.
We can ask, I may ask a question now. How much snow is up there now? Did you receive those shares?
This is the best, it's covered one. Our rules are all done.
Yeah, right.
It was like that at my house.
Still a bit snowbait to see.
Well, it just recently went up too. It was now a hundred and seven inches at the top instead of eighty nine, if you count it. Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, lots of those roots, so.
Commissioner Reed, I make a motion to recommend approval of the board of county commissioners for this project file MOD zero zero one zero dash two one, request to modify the conditioning use permit for Spire's planned unit development to add note number four to the condition eight dash seven item C setbacks to file C eight nine two dash zero seven to include the following. Or number four authorization to deviate further from these standards shall be approved by the homeowners association board of directors on a case by case basis, finding that it is in accord with the general specific objective of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Commissioner Reed has made a motion to approve file MOD zero zero one zero dash two one, conditional use permit modification Spire's PUD. Is there a second?
Commissioner Frank about second.
Commissioner Frank about second, any discussion? Hearing that on our own favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Everybody goes in the room, just zoom to our last file tonight, Judge. Our file, next file is AM zero 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 one dash two two and zone change or ZC zero 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 two dash two two Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change. Jamie and Doris Miller and Lester and Claudia Schaller is pressing a comprehensive plan, map amendment and Ag Forest Rule Residential and Zone Change from Ag Forest ten to Rule five. Lot one, which is ten point zero one acre, lot two, eleven point five two acres and lot three, eleven point five zero acres. Jamie's Lot Subdivision, this project is located off Blue Forest Lane and section thirty two, Township fifty eight north, range one west, Boise, Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, would staff present the project, please?
Thank you, Brian. Chad Chambers for the record, planning staff. As mentioned, we're here for a request to amend the comprehensive land use plan and zoning. These are the properties each floor. And the current comprehensive land use plan designation, as mentioned, is in the Ag Forest. On land use, they're requesting rural residential. The properties are currently zone agricultural forestry ten acre. They're requesting rule five acre. So again, the sites, we're looking at pre-plotted lots. Blue Forest Lane is privately owned and maintained. The services on site include individual septic systems, open water, Northside Fire, Avista for power, and it's in the Lake Ponderay School District eighty four. Environmental features on site include intermittent streams that run through the properties as well as forested freshwater forested shrub wetlands. There are no map slopes between fifteen and twenty nine percent or thirty percent or greater. There are two different types of soil on site, mission silt home, which is prime farmland if drained and it's somewhat poorly drained. And another soil, I probably can't say the name properly, but it's not prime farmland and it's well drained. These are the standards we use to review the file as well as looking at the comprehensive land use plan and all the components, goals, goals and objectives of that. We routed to the following agencies on screen, including Cootney because this property does fall within the area of city impact for Cootney. We did receive some comments back, Paranormal Health. I mean, these are summaries of the comments, you know, the comments in their entirety can be seen in the letters with the file. Paranormal Health said no site evaluation has been completed. We're expanding septic systems on the properties. They encourage the applicant to contact them. Army Corps of Engineers also said they encourage the applicant to contact them prior to developing the property because there is mapped wetlands on there and they do have some jurisdiction over that. Kind of a generic comment from Idaho Department of Environmental Quality saying that they don't review projects on a project specific basis. We did not receive a comment from Idaho Transportation Department. Fishing game did not comment and all other agencies did not respond. I would add, I should correct that. We did receive a comment from Cootney as part of the area city impact. And I apologize, this PowerPoint does not reflect that. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that they said in the staff report. And this is just a part of the letter, it's not the letter in its entirety. The proposal would allow for lots under the allowed lot size for the AG ten forest farmland residential designation of the city's comprehensive plan. If these lots were to be incorporated into the city of Cootney, they would be nonconforming for the comprehensive plan map designation of the area. And they also speak to the roads. Blue Forest Lane per Jamie's Lot Subdivision is a sixty foot wide private easement with a twenty foot wide gravel road that has not been constructed to county standards. Blue Forest Lane has a single exit and an entry onto Shingle Mill Road, a fifty foot wide public road. Emergency vehicles would be delayed and quick exit from the area in case of emergency is limited due to one way and one way out of the subdivision. The proposal does not show any preliminary design for future lots. As part of the site posting, I did go with to go out to the field and stop some photos of Blue Forest Lane to kind of give commissioners today an idea of what that road looks like.
What's the movie?
The movie picture, I probably have to actually show you on the map, but it's essentially as you go down and kind of hit that curvature turn that goes back up. And that's that kind of overpass essentially. I drew a significantly sized curve there, I just couldn't see it based on the time which I took it. We did receive some public comments. And those came after the staff report was prepared, which is why it's not reflected in here. Free supporting this request. We are joined with the mirror zoning change and the comprehensive plan map amendment. We're in favor of this request and have no concerns. And we're writing to indicate support for the zone change request to Rule five and the associated comp plan map amendment to Rule Residential requested by the Millers and Schaws. Our property is located along located along the north side of Blue Forest Lane at the intersection of Shingle Mill and about Jamie's Lot Two. Where we may concern, I live directly west of Jamie and Doris Miller and share about twelve hundred feet of property line. We're in favor of them being able to split their land down to five acres. With the current market increase in property values, we're running out of options for young families. So again, the applicant's request was reviewed against the comprehensive land use plan. This PowerPoint presentation today is just a summary of my review of that. The staff report has all the details. So the Ag Forest land use designation recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, thirty percent or greater. Transportation is provided by private roads or US floor service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slow poor soil condition, hazardous areas and lack of police or fire services. Staff found that steeper slopes do not prevail on the lots. Staff also found that the lots do have poor soil conditions since most of the property contains mission silt home, which is characterized as prime farmland. And that's probably a mistake in this PowerPoint, apologize. The properties are accessed by Blue Forest Lane, which is a private, the owned and maintained road. And I would note that looking at the subdivision plot on note two, it specifically says the road has not been constructed to county standards for maintenance. Now, whether or not that's changed, I think the advocate can better speak to that tonight. The lots do have access to or do not have a lack of access to police or fire services. They are afforded fire protection by the Northside Fire District who has adopted impact fees to adjust for changes to the county. So as someone owns a single family residential house, they'll have to contribute essentially to the impact fees to allow for the purchase of additional equipment for the fire department. There are some urban services on the property, notably the open water association that provides water to the properties. And I just note here that when we look at land divisions in the suburban and recreational zoning districts, lots may be one acre if they do have urban water and they're able to prove that service. So I just want to note that. So the applicant is proposing to move to the rural residential comprehensive land use plan designation. The rural residential comp plan recognizes areas to provide for residential development. Urban services are not available, slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazardous areas and critical wildlife habitats for lower densities, reduce potential impacts to resources and exposures to loss of property or lives. Small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So staff analyzed this again, and this is just a summary. The staff report has more details. Staff found that the steeper slopes don't fail on lots based on agency comments. Lots do contain a map wetlands where critical wildlife habitat resides. Small scale agriculture uses and residential development do remain viable on all three lots and they are provided with those services, fire and police. So looking at the zone change request from agricultural forestry ten acre to Rule five acre. We have ten designation recognizes areas that are designated in the comprehensive plan as Ag Forest ten, ten twenty. Do not feature prime ag soils for where agricultural and forestry pursuits remain viable. These areas may be within or adjacent to areas of city impact, or lands are afforded fire protection access to standard roads or other services. So looking at the properties, they do contain a mix of soils. Mission silt home is characterized as prime farmland if drained, however, the drainage class of mission silt home is somewhat poorly drained. So staff concludes that this soil type does not have attributes of fine farmland. The other soils on site are characterized as not prime farmland but are well drained. I would note that all three lots are in the area of city impact for Cootney. And again, they are afforded fire production and have some urban services. So looking at the designation for Rule five acre. One of the ways of looking at the Rule five acre in comparison to the Rule ten acre zoning district is looking at the density development, how many residences are in a five acre, per five acre density. And as part of staff's analysis of this, we look at the properties to the east of the property in particular, and I can show you on the map if you'd like. Staff did find that there are properties in the surrounding area that are at or even below that one dwelling unit per five acre density. That did fine, both requests to be consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. And staff is recommending approval. At this time, I can take any questions.
Any questions, Stan?
Did you repeat what Cootney said?
Yes, the whole part?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Okay, and again, this is just an excerpt, so it's not the entire letter. They did go on some more detail with certain things. These were the parts that stood out to me. The proposal would allow for lots under the allowed lot size for AG ten forest farmland residential designation of the city's comprehensive plan. If these lots were to be incorporated into the city of Cootney, they would be nonconforming for the comprehensive plan map designation of the area. Blue Forest Lane per Jamie's Lot Subdivision is a sixty foot wide private easement with a twenty foot wide gravel road that has not been constructed to county standards. Blue Forest Lane has a single exit and entry onto Shingle Mill Road, a fifty foot wide public road. Emergency vehicles could be delayed and quick exit from the area in any case of an emergency is limited due to one. In any case of an emergency is limited due to one way out of the subdivision. The proposal does not show any preliminary design for future lots. At the time, you know, when someone applies for a zone change, we don't ask for a future plan. The application does ask, you know, why are you making this request? In terms of the particularities of that and the details, I would think defer actually to the applicant to speak better tonight than I can.
Any questions? Could you pull up the map to look at this room here?
Certainly. So these are the three properties we're discussing tonight. Jamie's Lot Subdivision. And as you look here, then one dwelling unit on 1.6 acres. One dwelling unit on 1.91 acres. So that was part of the consideration. That staff. Used when looking at this file. And I would note, one dwelling unit on 1.56 acres. If we turn on the zoning district. They are zoned agricultural forestry 10 acre currently.
Yeah. It's a lot of history there. Representative?
One more question. When was the subdivision done? I can't remember it, but.
I don't recall.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it'll say. 2007, yeah. So right before the zoning conference. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time tonight. My name is Haley Miller. I am representing my parents here tonight, Doris and Jamie Miller, and their neighbors to the south, the Shaw's. I know there's been a lot of speculation about what future plans are tonight through the other projects, so I just want to start with that. The reason that we are making this request is not to develop and sell property. My sister, my youngest sister moved out of the area to Texas right after she graduated high school. And when she moved back, she's been now searching for a place that she could afford to purchase for about five years. The same with the Shaw's, their property. Their son is staying with them currently, he's unable to afford to purchase a piece of property, so that the request is really. To provide housing for family. And to do so lawfully. As Chad mentioned, all of the properties that are to the east of budding this site are. Substandard lots, they're all smaller than the 10 acres. Having lived in the Selly Valley since I was two years old, I can attest to the fact that all of them, with the exception of my grandfather's house or grandmother's house and. The one to the south were in existence at that time. My, this property in particular, but as a whole, all of Jamie's Lot Subdivision was purchased by my uncle in 1988. It's been family property ever since. In 2003, my grandmother platted off one 10 acre. Lot, which was called the Serbean Plot, and then it had a designated remander, and that was solely for financing purposes at the time. Later on, my uncle vacated that house and my parents moved into it, and with the intention of building. On Lot 3. So the property was replotted at that time into three lots to allow for that. And not only for them to put a place on it, but also for my grandmother to place a house on there. So I am very familiar with the soil, I'm very familiar with the character of the area, and we have no intentions of trying to change that. We're just simply trying to provide an affordable housing option. As we discussed, the properties directly abutting Roost Horse Lane at Shingle Mill Road are both about an acre and a half. And each are developed with one single family dwelling. The property to the south is about. Three and a half acres via parcel. Directly abutting it. And public comments that were provided from the Cohals, as Chad analyzed and provided. Directly to the north of the Roost Horse Lane where it connects into Shingle Mill Road. And the Field Bars, who also provided comments, are directly abutting Roost Horse Lane to the south. And the Rains directly abutting to the east provided comments, all in favor of this project. To touch on a couple of the agency comments that came in, as you all are aware, the area of city impact is not a regulatory area. It's an area that was determined to be likely to be annexed in at some point in the future. But in order for properties to be annexed in, they need to be adjacent to a property that is within the boundaries of the city of Kootenay. So there's a substantial amount of property that would have to be annexed in before this would ever become part of the city of Kootenay. And so their comments are intended. For in the future, if that ever came in, to guarantee compliance. In an area like this. It is likely, I think, as a planner, that that may change over time as things grow in that direction. And they made a couple of other comments regarding the road, and I'll speak to that. When Jamie's Lot Plots went through the planning department process, they were required to upgrade the road to private road standards. So it was designed, constructed, and inspected at that time and found to meet those standards. It is one way in and one way out, but it is in excess of the fire code access minimums that are required. And I spoke to the fire chief for Northside Fire, and he said as long as it was built in excess of the fire code standards, he had no concerns about access in and out of the site. Also wanted to speak to the Army Corps comments regarding the wetlands and development near that area. This property is very hard to tell on the screen, but you can see. That the wetlands run on the edges of the property. Roost Horse Lane comes across, it drops down. Crosses the creek that you saw in the picture with the Palmer, heads back up into another flat area, and then back down to the wetlands area. So those areas are not areas that are suitable for construction, and they will not be impeded by anything that happens on that property in the future. But any requirements of the Army Corps would be met at that time. Additionally, Panhandle Health commented that no applications had been submitted to them. The reason for that is, is that we. Unless we receive approval for the zone change, there is no development occurring, and it would expire before that did. So we will make sure that that happens. Each of these lots, as they exist, have received approval for a septic permit in the past. So there's no reason to believe that they would not do that moving forward for any future development. Staff found that this project was in compliance with your comprehensive plan. Goals and objectives. I just wanted to touch on a couple property rights. Property rights is a big issue in this area, and it, in my eyes, goes two ways. It's the rights of the landowner and the rights of the property owners that are joining them. In this case, this property is situated in a way that's fairly secluded from many other properties. The three lots that are in question are the only three lots that are served by that private road. The property owners who are most affected by any increase in traffic, which I think would be minimal since these. Children are already living on site with their parents. They have provided comment that they see no issue with this request. And we received no other public comments after it being routed to neighbors within 300 feet that were in opposition of the project. For the land use. I wanted to point out that this property is fully served by public water, as Chad stated. It would be if it was in a suburban zone, able to be developed at a rate of one acre lots. And due to that fact, that's not the intent, we're not asking for that, we're asking for the minimum to provide family housing. But it is in an area that is serviced by those public services. It's also serviced by a fire district, it's also serviced by police. And Roost Horse Lane connects into a county road. And I would note that the easement for Roost Horse Lane is actually wider than the right of way for the Shingle Mill County Road. And what that says to me is that it's the width that's standard for any public road right of way. So in the future, if development was to occur that required that road to be upgraded to public road standards, the land has been reserved in order to do so. The road is solely maintained by the owners of these three lots at their expense, so they are the only ones that would. See any downfall to any additional traffic that's on that lot. Application, as we know, was routed to 17 agencies, only six of which commented. Went through that just a little bit. Agricultural soils, as I've pointed out, are poorly drained in this area. I think it's interesting to say that the well-drained soil areas are actually the areas that are down near the creeks where the water is flowing. Year round to some degree, and the upland is. Really in an area where we have a high water table, it doesn't drain well. That property is all currently being used for residential purposes. They have some small polyfarm type pursuits on it. My nephew does 4H, so he has a cow up there currently. And but not any sort of major agricultural pursuits that are occurring. And staff did find that this property was more consistent with the rural designation in that rural 5 zone. You can stand for any other questions, but I think that that covers the basis of the information.
One, Haley, you mentioned just now. Because the whole thing. Ag forest designation, and the gist of that is to preserve agriculture and forest areas for those pursuits. As we all know, all the way through Selly Valley, there's history of lots created smaller than. Present zoning and even the more reasons of the vast zoning and so forth. So. And yet, the overarching. Plot is maintaining the property for agriculture and forestry uses. We're going to come up with some numbers. About two, not too many days, months from now, that are going to. Talk about how many of the parcels out there actually have. Forestry and ag pursuits and how many don't. And the ones that don't, people live there because they want to live there. And you've got personal experience there as well as being a planner. How do you, how do you balance the two?
So I absolutely respect the want to keep that agricultural. Pursuit out there in that area, but I think that it's inevitable that the people are coming to this area and prices have risen, and we need to be able to provide housing for them. So I look at sites like this as an opportunity to do so. It's secluded, it doesn't impact the others that are around it. And by clustering higher development with existing higher development, you keep it from infringing on those larger acre farms. So I think that this actually. Fits right into what you're saying and fits into what the really true intent is of the groups out there that are wanting to keep that area rural. By clustering this and making only what's needed.
Any more questions?
Commissioner Reed, are you willing to go about the application?
I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of good information there.
I know what I look for when I review, so that makes it easier.
Great, so we'll close that. We'll put a public comment, anybody with their hands up. Two over here in the audience. So we have two in the audience.
My name is Fred Amet. I live at 488 Shingle Mill Road. And I hope my comments tonight will be seen as being directed to the plan. And not to your application necessarily. The staff has highlighted the idea that. This property lies in the ACI of Kootenay. I'd like to comment on that briefly. The area of Kootenay proper inside the city limits is. About 300 acres. The area of the ACI for Kootenay is about 40,000 acres. Since the ACI was developed or established. Kootenay has used. Less than 10%, certainly, of the available ACI for expansion. The idea of ACI is to have. Land available for growth. And as you mentioned, it was supposed to be. Adjacent to the city limits. It's supposed to be able to provide city services. It's specifically for growth around the existing city. The property that we're looking at now is over two miles from the closest city limit of Kootenay. It's going to take. An inordinate amount of time to develop. That amount of ground. To the point where that will be included inside the city limits, the property that we're speaking of. When we think of city services. Snow removal, sewer, street maintenance. The road is private, so snow removal and maintenance is not an issue. Sewer certainly is. And so is water. Two years ago, we submitted a. Report to the board about. Selly Valley's Sub Area. Development Committee. And it included a report from Alton Anderson, who's a. Board Director on the Oden Water Association. He said that the. Oden Water was. Built for 175 users. And they have not been able. To expand. That, and they're having a hard time with 175. As recently as the last board meeting, the association said they will not accept any new. Applications for Oden Water. So the. The staff's comments that Oden Water services the area, it is true for those that have hookups. But those who want hookups are being told that there will be no water available. I think it's. It's not, it's disingenuous to say that it's part of the ACI. And none of the ACI requirements are met in this instance. Another thing that puzzles me is that we continue to hear when we come to these meetings that the. Prime agricultural land has to be 30% slope. If it's not 30% slopes, then obviously it's meant to develop or. Put a plant or some sort of industry on it. As a farmer, I can tell you that 30% slope does not make prime agricultural land. I'm surprised that even though it may be part of code. That we as North Idahoans can't agree that flat land is prime agricultural ground. If, even if the soil may not be the best. To say that you need to have 30% slope for prime agriculture. I think is wrong as well. And the staff opted to. Point out or highlight again that the eastern boundary of the property in question. Has non-conforming lots, some very small. And that's true. And all along Selly Road, there are small lots and all throughout the valley. There exist, many of them exist before the first planning or comp plan was put in place. To use that as a reason to allow further reductions in the non-conforming lots. Just extends. That growth. Further into the, into the valley. There's 105 acre piece to the rest. If five acres can be put in here because there's one and a half acres to the east. This fellow can carve out a 20 acre section and ask for five or two or whatever. The growth just continues to go on. I'd submit that. The first comprehensive plan was put in place to prevent that sort of encroachment. To use lots. Or properties that were existing prior to the comp plan as a justification to continue to cut things up. Was not a wise decision for the future of the plan. I would urge you to look for an alternative, alternative way to help. These folks with their problem with housing without cutting. The property into smaller pieces. Thank you.
So my name's Kirk Davidson. My address is 990 Shingle Mill Road. Can.
It really doesn't, just speak louder.
Oh, sorry, loud voice. So my address is 990 Shingle Mill Road on the property exactly south of the property in question. And I'm in opposition to this and that. They've been awesome neighbors, but I'm opposed to the cutting up of the Selly Valley. And part of the reason for that is. We moved out there because we want. we moved out there because we wanted to live in the country. And we did not want to live where there's a subdivision right next to us. And just like people could live in a a community with CCNRs that control that, the planning and zoning controls what the land is like around it. And you you buy into property assuming that that's what it's going to be like. And so in all fairness, if if you buy into that and then that can be taken away from you, it's not exactly fair to the property owners that live around it. And so say, for instance, our kids, we we know that we have this great forest out behind our house. And there aren't houses around there because there can't be houses around there because there's ten acre minimums. And our kids will have to go camp back there. It's a very secluded place that they can go back there and and there's no houses. That could change. If there is five acre minimums back there, that means that there's two houses back there now. So if there's another house per five acre plus maybe an ADU, that means that there could feasibly be ten more houses back on those acres, which is a lot of houses. And that all affects how we we view where we placed our house, where you know, our our window from our bedroom would have like a lot of cars driving up and down that loose horse lane. You know, if if we wanted it to be fair, then I would say we should do it with the planning and zoning where we zone and plan according to how we want things to grow. And if that happens to be the desire of everybody in that area, that maybe you want to develop a whole new township on Shingam Mill because there's already a few houses there, then to make it fair for everybody, you should allow everybody to to do that. I mean, if if it wanted to be fair, because you had a lot of houses added on to our adjacent property, I mean, would you allow a a road easement from your land onto ours because ours is secluded back there? Because I get it, our kids are maybe going to want places to live and we have all this acreage, but there's no way back there. What's that? Oh, so anyway.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So when did you purchase your property?
Probably ten or so years ago.
So the subdivision to the north was already there?
The, yes, and I believe most of those houses were they their grandfather did. So we knew that going in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, all right. And your property, you're you're also ag forest.
Yeah, we're eighteen acres.
Ag forest ten zoning, so you you at present, that's all you could do with your property, you can't split it.
Correct.
So because you do two more acres, at least. Do you, so the, as I stated before, the the gist of the comp plan with the ag forest designation is to perpetuate agriculture and forestry uses. Are you using your property for agricultural or forestry uses?
About two-thirds of our land is forest. And yes, that has been an ongoing thing to have the forest in good shape. Then about a third of it, we actually do, we probably have about fifty fruit trees on our land. So we don't sell them, but we have lots of people that come over and pick after we're done. And it's been a work in progress to to actually do that. So no, we don't have an actual farm, but we do have, we do take care of the forest and we have been working on that.
Do you have a a forestry exemption?
Correct.
So that that shows that you're, you're actively growing trees.
Yes. Getting rid of the bad ones, cleaning up the forest so it's not a fire hazard.
It's all part of it.
Yeah, we've been pruning fruit trees the past couple of days.
But you don't have an ag exemption because you don't.
I completely understand that. There might be part ag and it might be part.
But you have to have one, I mean, you apply for it anyway. So that's, yeah, just just picking out some information about the area.
Yeah, so we do have forestry exemption.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a whole close of public comment. Do I say anything?
So I would just say the rural designations that we're requesting for are exactly that. They're so intended to keep the rural character of the area. They're not high density. They are intended for residential development, which is exactly what exists back there. As to the question about the easement, that's something you'd have to take up with my parents. I don't grant easements across their property. And I would say that I worked for Fatah County just right at the beginning of them adopting the last zoning and comp maps. And much of this area just to the south of this, almost touching that southern border was, I think there's maybe one person between, was all designated for future growth as suburban. And was downzoned by residents and not by the plan for the area. That was something that was a specific request and it was a large area with people asking for whatever designation they wanted. It was a mix of ag and rural designations. And and at that time, that group was requesting the ability to have rural properties just like we are. Because that was their intended use for that property.
Could I ask her question? Do these properties have ag or forest exemptions?
They do currently have a forestry exemption, I believe, on the furthest piece to the north. And they would still, if they divided, one of the two would still be six acres and would still be able to retain that egg or that timber exemption. They're actively harvesting timber, they're not actively planting any trees. Those plans can designate a large variety of things. And oftentimes, it's just maintaining healthy timber.
Growing trees.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question. If it's not possible to apply for any more water, what will you do about that?
They'll have to drill wells. Five acres is plenty of space to be able to handle a septic system and a well and provide the adequate separation that's required, if I could.
Any questions? Thank you. You could expand that map, please. And go down towards the highway. Rest of. It's got to go down by the highway too. That's a mile and a half from the highway.
Yeah, it's not shown there, but about six years ago, they cut up and planned piece of property up in the front.
Yeah.
That's I was talking about. Pretty close. But angry. But that commission, that county commissioners approved it. That's the second person when it's not on the map, but. They, there's a couple of ag lots that are now green, so. Slot that is. There's an active narrative of providing cabins.
Yeah, you did everything. So the boom there is the suburban, right?
No, yellow.
Yellow suburb, yellow suburb, blue is five. Light green is ten and the dark green is twenty.
Correct.
Yeah, this as we have seen, the the whole of Selly and including this area is a very complex and interesting area with great diversity and soils and water and land and uses. And it's been developed over the last hundred years in various ways. As we noted and as we talked with the Selly Committee so many times along the roads, we can't say major roads, it's the roads in Selly Valley that parcels were in the past broken up whatever, to give a one acre parcel to a son or daughter or an uncle or aunt or a grand, whatever. And and beyond, sometimes two acres, but that's where a lot of the small acreages came from along the roads because that's direct access and easiest to use. It's it's a hard one. And I know that the Selly Committee graphically did as well, what do you do with all of the non-conforming areas either in in any of the zones? There's always going to be properties that are not conforming to the zone and or the the comp plan designation. It's just interesting to me that when the subdivision was done, it complied with the then new zoning a year or two later.
I think on the one hand, I I agree, I share the concern with this about using existing non-conforming lots as a rationale to expand further least higher density. I know this isn't high density that we're talking about. But the code doesn't prohibit that. Like, I might wish, it's one of those provisions of our code that I might wish is different. On the other hand, though, the code doesn't say are there lots nearby that are that are at that density? It says, is the surrounding area already developed at or near that density? So so I don't think it's fair to just look in one direction. I think you have to look three sixty. And if you look three sixty around this property, I think you find other larger properties. So it's not obvious to me, the way I would interpret that particular element of our code, that this situation meets that requirement that the surrounding area is already developed at or near the five acre density. I'm not sure, there are there are a lot of strict factors here, so I'm not sure at the end of the day, that's determinative of which way we should go. But I would argue that that requirement hasn't been met.
Also have manufacturing within a mile and a half.
Yeah.
Ten or two.
Yeah.
And Selly Committee has voiced many times their concerns about drilling wells and the availability of water in the area.
And that's going to be on the property owner to bring water. And that's what it is.
Being a person with a half a gallon a minute myself.
There's ways to to get around them. If they can't, they can't produce water, then they can't build.
Well, I built before I discovered that. I only got a half a gallon.
You better prove your water before you build. Sometimes if it didn't bank under the
Yeah, I didn't.
It is an interesting area. It's kind of like the old Overdery area where those houses were clustered. There used to be a township. Was there a township in there? It's near.
No, no.
Bob Selly, it's just a community. It is a nice little community. I mean, there's there's water, which is folks drilling wells where we've got big enough wells. It would be a lot. So over, and this is around in the Selly Valley, this is all ninety-five and forty-four. Supposedly years ago, mine's not good. But they're proving that what I'm getting at is they proved water.
I hesitate to ask this question because we've been here before with this question in mind. But I'm asking this of staff. Is there any other way that the owners can do this?
No. That's really a tough question and 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 it's really becoming it comes down to I think the answer is no. We've had film supply for lot size minimum variance. And and this was their reason is we're going to do this for family. And we had one, we had one that we staff approved that thought that it was an appropriate measure and the makers appealed and and the board denied it. And and it was, it was good to see the, see the board's opinion on that because it it seemed like maybe that wasn't an answer to this, but it's it's not appropriate. Variances aren't where you dress zone. And so the the challenge that we're having is that somewhere in the past, a family exemption exempted zone. And we have people all the time. And I mean, every day come in and asked about, can we still this property for our family? And we tell them, no, you cannot. Without doing a rezone or or considering that possibility. Because, and and I mean, some of them are sad stories. I mean, it's amazing. Sold my five acre property and bought a ten acre property so I could get five acres for my mom. I didn't realize it was a landmark thing. Sorry. I I mean, there's lots of stories. Everybody has a story and this scenario, the reason. And and so the analysis that staff has done to look at, how is this going to affect services? Comments that we got back, I was impressed. This is the most comments we ever got back on any file. I think there were seven responses. I I mean, even ITD sent us, right, their IDL. I mean, yeah, some of these ones we haven't heard from.
Yeah.
So like, at least they sent us a note, gentlemen. It was amazing. So that means that they're starting to pay more attention. It's a, this is a tough one, just like the the comp plan issues, the way the comp plan was originally laid out. This area was zoned smaller lots and designated smaller lots. Some of this area was. Some of this area was, and they did change it aside. But if that's not appropriate, it's a challenge because it's of the services that are featured. In the area of significantly, near the maintained zones, isn't a developed subdivision, where it's built to private housing. And, and the bottom line is how are we going to address, how is the captain going to assess the properties in the future? Yes. Personally, some folks are active and involved and have already made those decisions. Other folks do you allow more full size housing? We get that all the time too. Variants is for larger ABUs.
If I can just add something briefly to that. Part parcel two, requesting a zone change and dividing the property, it's also splitting the ownership. Not everyone wants to have land with their family, wants to have that same ownership. And that's why sometimes we have these requests. We have had lot size minimum variances in the past where, like Nolan said, there's two houses recommended to that. So, because the whole area and surrounding area is developed at ongoing five acres or less than. And so a large part of that was part of my process here.
Also family, I guess you could put an ABU in there for extra housing. That's one way around it.
There's lots of loopholes. The question is, do you want to build that way and finance it?
Yeah. Right.
There's lots of, there's lots of danger. You can build an pantry. You can build a ten thousand square foot hall. How do you finance that, right? I know it's not for yourself.
You're still empathetic, but then you take a look.
There is a problem with families.
There is, I mean, it is, well, the existing family, Chris Cole cured pretty big problems from before. But it closed the door on a lot of possibilities.
So it's interesting looking down in a couple counties down in Mass List County. Oh, there are ACI growing out of City of Lewiston. This five working itself out into intense months, just like we're trying.
And then you go back to the criteria. We're doing this, you take a look at that and see how does it fit?
Yeah.
There's an issue with real ten, too, by the way.
Yeah.
So compliance is more residential, it's less than thirty percent. So one other criteria for real ten, it's more than thirty percent.
Said it's similar to the ag forest twenty.
Well, it's different. That's a use thing, right?
Yeah, true, right.
Nobody should think that steep salt land is prime ag land, right? It's just nonsensical.
Unless you're in.
Well, no, the parents thing, the, the, the.
You can, you can deal with it.
Less than thirty percent of the boost, but they don't, they've got thirty percent.
So they deal with it, but.
Right. They'll get crooked combines.
They have to exclude the flamma.
Yeah, I, I know. See, why, what happened?
But that's an area where, where the code is in conflict.
Yeah, when you read the, on the zoning, you read the R ten. And A is characterized ways, folks cheaper than thirty percent.
Right. The land use designation, so real residential is less than thirty.
Less than thirty percent. And, yeah, it's just like, wow, what happened here? And then the soils. It's in the floodway, it's not on. So then this is, okay, none of those apply, therefore, therefore five fits. By default. Which is it doesn't stand on its own, it stands on the shoulders of, we can't do it. Can't read that. So, yeah, it's a, it's a odd way to build a boat. I know, we gotta get going here.
That's just an interesting ground in that corner.
Yeah. In my mind, I'm trying to retrace the history. That's why I asked the question about when the plan was done. Two thousand and seven, it was before that, before the zoning came in, two thousand and eight. So I don't recall, was the area five acre zone before then? It must have been. I mean, the vast majority of the county was five acres.
Ten acre zone.
Yeah, it was further out. So so for whatever reason, the family decided to plat it at these acreages for the three lots. Which then were in compliance when the zoning came in a year later, from that standpoint. But they're above the zoning that was there when it was platted. And the family at that time felt good about what they did, I'm sure. That's kind of the testimony. And things changed. Now, that was a few years ago. And the family had owned the property for some time. And ended up with dwellings that are on it. One of which has the forest exemption, the other one doesn't. So again, like my comment before, maybe the individual properties around the whole valley are not expressly used for ag or forest uses. But the people want to live there, just like the neighbors said, who wanted to live in a place that was with that area concept and so forth. And it's a great place and, you know, whether it's Fred's property or Bob's property, it's, it's out there in the valley and everybody enjoys the ambiance of the area. But you leave stuff the way it is? Or do you allow some changes? You know, say individual minor changes, but collectively, they're, they're major. It's that old saying. Prominent fixed on the horns of the lamb. Skewed by the horns of the lamb. If it goes here, what's the reasoning? And this is the other thing. We talk about a comprehensive plan amendment, saying that the designation doesn't fit, doesn't apply to this property. Which again, like we've argued in the past few hearings, con plan designations and zoning districts are put down, it's for an area, it's for a district, it's for a, a large area combining a bunch of lots that are within it. Yeah. As if we're, you know that it implies that every property within the con plan designation fits or must fit or whatever. You know, it's a broad brush on the area.
Testimony in this room and upstairs is that when that was laid down, it was with a broad brush.
Broad brush, that's comprehensive planning. Comprehensive planning does not necessarily take individual properties account. Neither does zoning. Zoning is a district. It's a district, says this district, it's better if the properties within this district are all zoned the same. And that's certainly implied with comprehensive plan designation. It's best if all properties within this designation are the same.
All right. For water, the water. That came out that that system was designed for everything. It was never designed for residential.
Residential.
But it has worked over, so.
Yeah. And now they're, they're paying the price. They get some.
Which brings up why on some of our easements we've had add water stated on, on.
Yeah.
Has answered that question.
You know, and that was essentially, you took Cooney County example on the Brary. All those irrigation districts out there were for irrigation. And some of those have been tapped into now for purely residential. And they're tipping over. Can't afford to suck the water out of the ground anymore, now with the present electric prices. So I don't, I'm debating here what to do.
But yes, Steve, Steve would testify that that was like, right.
Sure. And rightfully so. That's the way it works. But so then you end up with what ifs.
So once we look at it as it's, it's a personal need.
Yeah, which is what individual properties are based on. You know, they're not saying, if it was the other way, to say, well, you know, now that we've thought about it for twenty years, this whole area should be five acres, because it was not quite appropriate to call it tens or twenties. That would be a different discussion, but it's, it doesn't happen. Very seldom in this county anyway, as an area come back in. We've had some that they kind of lean that way. But no, it's individual properties. Saying either we don't think it fits, or we'd rather do this with our property, therefore we need this change. When it comes down to. So the need is on a personal basis? It really isn't. Still have to go through the same test of the services available for your property to change. But the nagging question in the background is, is this going to spawn other requests for the same thing? And then what, as we've heard so many times, open the door, let it in, and then it happens. And certainly, it does happen. Yeah. And the incremental, whatever use of a service doesn't appear that it's detrimental. But then there's two, then there's five, then there's ten, then there's twenty.
Exactly. You know where you are.
That's true. And I, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't wait.
And definitely the comprehensive plan is supposed to lead us to who does it benefit, who, what's it going to contribute to the community? And things like that too.
Yeah. Yeah, and those, you know, as the state court requires, when you're going to modify a plan, and I think it implies wholesale modification, not just individual parcel, a wholesale, then you look to the future, because it's a future land use now. And what services can be reasonably provided over the next X period to, and therefore with that designation, here's the impact from that designation, here's the impact from this designation, here's an impact from this designation. And really think it out and, and talk with the providers and what can we do, what can't we do? If we do that, we're going to tip over. If we do this, we're okay. That's on a broader scale. Therefore, it's very hard to look at an individual property request and go through the exercise. There's just, there's just no way to tell. Well, okay. And even to say, okay, urban services are not provided here because they can't, can't, doesn't appear that they could service it. Yeah, the rest of them are there and, and, right, there's other services there and certainly we can miss out the well drillers who would show up sometime in the next year to drill a well. Talked with a few lately, they're really stretched out far. So, yeah, it just I'm going back and forth as I'm sitting here. Oh, boy. Yeah. Quite a few trucks pulling up to this figure at the fairgrounds. Quite a few. What are those? Oh, shit. Yeah. Start putting a meter on that thing. Procedurally, you know, the, the staff has made a recommendation and therefore they have put together findings of fact and conclusions of law that support that or that lead to that recommendation. If we decide that we can't go with that, then we have to do the same thing and come up with findings of fact and conclusions of law that say that this shouldn't go ahead. And that, that leaves us in a very precarious position because we haven't had the last three months to prepare a case for the man. I, I've always felt very strained by that fact. And we've been caught up short a couple of times over the last two years, because we haven't been able to do that adequately. And I, I don't know, that's a.
And as a jury on, you know, they need to prepare for the defense of the prosecution and the suit of duty, so.
Yeah. Well.
To make the decision.
Right. And judges have a way of explaining the rules and, and the rule right there, reading the language for denial. It says, refer to following conclusions of law and specify which conclusions the project meets or fails to me. So it requires specificity as to why not. And I don't feel comfortable doing that at a, at this point in time on just about any case, any. You can't make up your mind before the hearing as to which way it should go, so you can't, you can't.
Your advances deliberation needs to cover the specifics for the government. Is it appropriate, when you're deliberating, to determine that your motion takes care of that direct statement? Or findings of fact and conclusions based upon your deliberation? You will go back, you will write up findings of fact with conclusions, and you will have to change that.
And that's why that was amended to do that. So, then it's our job to, to deliberate and to specify why. Why, so I.
So you need to consider one of the. The first room.
Right, and like I said, the the comprehensive plan being a broad document that talks broadly about areas, says that this area is agriculture, forestry based, and the gist of it is, is to preserve it. The, the way to not preserve that is to, one way that is identified is to peck away at that and break it down. So, that would be a, from the purist standpoint, to say that would be, uh, not a, a reason to. Okay, that's what I was going before, looking back at the, at the comprehensive plan designation for rural.
I think the thought that you expressed is, is the strongest argument against the idea of this. Recognizers that land use areas were designed to cover broad aspects of the land. Property characteristics, individual property characteristics, those are going to vary based in one property to another, but in general, the area as a whole suited to the side forest pursuit. And if you look at the map, we would definitely be creating a little island with rural residential, middle back forest.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, that's both from the comprehensive plan designation and then following zoning. That's what it would do. So I'm looking now, I think this is the con-plan rural residential areas provide for residential development in areas where urban services are not available, and slopes may vary up to 30%, like you're saying before. These areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats, lower densities reduce potential impacts on resources and exposure to loss of property and lives. Small-scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So, yeah, that's the, that's, that's the truth.
There was one other comment, I should have made this before. I think, and this has been going on for a while, I think we've been interpreting in the Act Forest Land Use Designation, the statement about residential development challenges existing due to soil conditions, I, I don't, I can't quote the words off the top of my head. And we seem to go back to, well, it's not primex soils, or it is primex soils, so we're back to the quality of the soil for an agricultural use. And, and I'm not sure the way I read the con-plan, that that's really what they were getting at. I think they were getting at, is, is it difficult to build there because of some characteristic of the land? And, and not, is the soil good for growing stuff? I'm not sure if that matters in this particular case, it's not obvious that there are challenges, which if there were, I think that would point it back towards Act Forest.
There's already residents.
But, but I just would want to bring that out, because I, I think, I think we've been interpreting, my opinion, we've been interpreting that incorrectly. I don't think that was the intent of the con-plan, was to make another statement about, is the soil good to grow stuff? And, and that's a reason to make it Act Forest. In the context of that statement about development challenges, residential development challenges. It, it, this is one of those to me, where if you look at the specifics of the lots, I can see them fitting either way. Which is why it's so difficult to make a decision really, one way or the other. Just why I come back to the statement I made a few, few minutes ago, that if, if we're, the strongest reason not to do it is, is the general argument that when the land use designation areas were created, they were big areas, same with the zoning, they were big areas. Intended, intended to encompass properties that in general had those characteristics, but not necessarily property by property by property.
No, there's no such analysis done.
Right.
That's interesting. You know, after the last meeting, we went back to that, look at staff reports.
Right after the con-plan?
Were consistent, these staff reports are consistent. The stuff that we're doing is consistent. We haven't changed the process.
So nobody raised that objection, nobody raised that objection right after the old current complex and current zoning in a specific place, that is interesting.
So let's talk about the, the, what could be formed realistically.
Foundations, yeah, I mean, I think that's why I was asking the questions about, is there, yeah, because that's, that's the other underlying argument. If you have five acres or six acres of a house on it, you can state, I'm growing trees on this property, and you get an exemption from, from taxes, from land taxes. It's the same, essentially for an ag, you got to, according to the code, you got to show that you're pulling down a thousand dollars of income from that agricultural use per year. And there are people out there doing it. In, in Sully Valley, some with larger acreages, but if they're doing, and, and for whatever, it's a broad category of agricultural uses that you could pull down a thousand bucks. You know, from livestock to, to poultry to.
Fruits.
The various. Yeah. And it's a, it's a very large thing, so, I don't know, you know, you raise one, one wood steer a year, and you're going to sell it at the auction, you know, for, you're probably going to make a thousand bucks. Yeah, so, yeah, and here, and here, right, in the rural residential, it says, small-scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So it doesn't, it doesn't give us a clear path to follow, it gives us this, just like outside today, this muddy track that you can slip and slide around. Hey, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So as this, we'll, we'll see this year as agricultural changes. A lot of the hay fields will follow.
Yeah.
Cost of fertilizer in the south, it's not.
Yeah. Well, I was talking to the forester earlier today, and he was saying, you know, he's got so much work now, because our forests are dying because of the last three years' summer drought. And they're changing rapidly, and there's just a whole rod of timber that better come down soon, or it's just going to be nothing, not even fireable. So it's changing, and I don't know the corresponding change in agricultural pursuits, but I've, I mean, we all heard from the hay farmers last summer, forget it. It, it just about wasn't worth putting fuel in the machines to go cut it.
Not including a thousand dollars of fertilizer.
Yeah, no. I still saw guys doing it, this, you know, they're ready, they're buying stuff, but what else? No, you gotta, gotta move ahead. All right.
And then we'll take a land use, section 2.5, we'll go down it to the rural district and, and look at what it says for 10 acre pieces, what we're supposed to be looking at, easy access in and out, make sure that there's emergency access. Got to consider.
And make a decision on the con-plan first.
Right, yeah. True, and.
So it's just because it's.
Yep, but again, like I said, it, it does, it, it does fit the residential designation, but it doesn't not fit the ag forest designation. I'm saying it doesn't, there's no fine line, there's no nice neat line there to, to follow. No, even here in, in Chad's report, under comprehensive land use plan, Ag Forest Staff Analysis, some urban services, namely open water, well, no, apparently they're not. They're currently serving the properties currently serving, but not expanding. They're not taking new, new hookups.
We'll have to go well.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's consistent with Ag Forest. Very few places in the county that you share a home venture into, or fire services are not there, even out there down southeast, southeast to Park Fork. Park Fork Fire is consistent and said, yep, we'll serve it. So.
So I have a question for staff, is to, along with the impact, these will be, fire department will be inspecting the property at the final, also due to make sure that what fees were collected with what was constructed on the property?
I, I can answer what impact, how the fees are established, they're not based on your particular use. When Northside Fire recently updated their capital improvement plan, which is what I'm talking about, they looked at what their future needs are to service anticipated growth, and then they determined what capital projects and capital items they will get to acquire, and then they looked at what the existing development is versus what new development share that is, and that all calculates out into a formula, and across the board for residential development, they charge $785 per residential unit.
But they don't. It's not, it's not nothing to prove with the actual use.
They have a structure, but they probably won't have to be divided for process, and I believe they'll be noticed as part of that. And I'm just, there one more thing, the open water consideration is based on public testimony, there's nothing in fact in the record that says that they won't provide agricultural service to the site.
Yeah, it's, we did, some level appears to be going on, but.
I don't think the water is stumbling wrong, because you have. Water services.
Okay, what do we do?
Yeah, what's the real district, residential densities and limited uses, allow small scale farming, encourage conservation development. Right, Julia?
Maybe that's another exploration. We've had very few of any conservation developments in the county.
Yeah, we've done one.
Yeah, one.
Well, this should be.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So, obviously we're not talking right now about a subdivision, but this is where you, where you want to see if the path through a con-plan amendment and a zone change are going to lead to something productive. So you want to, you know, it's our desire to talk about it in those terms. And don't recall about a conservation easement, or even a BUD for that matter.
So a conservation subdivision, so say your density is, you know, three homes, because you have 30 acres of salt.
Right.
So you got to use three, three units. Conservation subdivision, the way you create up to six, whatever size parcel you want, but the rest of the property has to stand there and set aside for conservation.
Conservation.
And, and so, I, I mean, it's an avenue, but I, I almost wonder sometimes if it, I mean, we created, we did one out between, you know, Creek Striver, and it was, I mean, they created one and a half acre lots of 10 acres out. And then the islands are wetland. Yeah, yeah, with 20 acres of what I was, around this, and, and it, I mean, then you ended up with that, right? A acre and a half lots.
Yeah.
So it, it just, it just comes down to, you know, what, what do you want this to look, and how does it, how does it grow in the future?
Yeah, and, and obviously to how it fits a property. It's supposed to be sensitive to that, and a few of these similar, you have open space, designated open space and so forth. If it fixes away the land and any other, any other improvements on the property that you don't want to change or do want to change. I don't know, that was part of my question before, is there another, another way to accomplish what the family wants and or needs? I don't know.
But it seems like that path would get to exactly the same density, just with some.
Yeah. Or it wouldn't have the zoning, it wouldn't have.
Wouldn't have the zoning, but, I mean, one of my concerns is this, this whole, is the surrounding area already developed? At, at or near that density, and, and I don't like perpetuating that. But I can see that they would argue whether the density's there regardless, in that case, you'd still have six homes on 30 acres.
But again, you wouldn't have the zoning, so the, the zoning, the, shall we say, the temptation to.
Perhaps, perhaps the temptation isn't there, but I can see that argument is going to be made, it's.
Oh sure.
Just that one home for five acres, right? Even though it may be heads gone through a conservation subdivision.
It's also interesting, because the committee took their stand on clustered housing as well, and you know.
Well, and they also did moving the ACI.
Yeah, that was a, that was a good discussion, you know, about, wait a minute, how come it's, it's 20 times as big as the city as the ACI? Yeah. No, that's it, that's it.
But there was an area to go back to cluster, not a policy cluster, but that is a nice, that, that intersection, that's, that has turned out to be this area, and it's starting to clean itself up, because people are buying there, fixing the property section. It's the traffic wise, uh, you know, uh, I couldn't even talk about.
I know, I wish they would, I wish they would, it needs a turn lane real bad, real bad. Yep, no, it's been.
I know there's a problem that.
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
You're going to put the electric line in, cook these here.
Yeah. Chamber mill is not an easy solution, it's going to require some property purchase. But at some point, it's going to have to be done.
And there's a lot that's going to happen across the street. And there's a lot that's gonna happen across the street, really, with trucks.
Possibly so, now that the N's totally back in charge of that line. Same. All right, what are we gonna do here?
Even working at the definition, rural district, limit residential, um, allow low density resident use. Do you feel you need more time? To me, it doesn't fit our five definition.
Okay.
It fits more of ten, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's the other part that I.
All right, well, so just take up the comp.
Yeah, we need to do one at a time first, obviously. Yep, so, um. Yeah, this is a recommendation to the board. So, all right, um, I think I'm ready to make a motion. Commissioner Davis. I recommend, I move to recommend denial to the Board of County Commissioners's project AM. File, file AM zero 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 one dash two two, requesting a comprehensive land use plan amendment from Ag Forest. Plan to rural residential based upon the following conclusions. The, the basic conclusion is that I, I feel that the property, the area. Is more suited to Ag Forest designation than rural residential. This is based on the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and the testimony received at this hearing. Further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth. At the hearing and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Let the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to deny file AM zero, 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 one dash two, two. Comprehensive plan amendment, is there a second?
Commissioner Casey's second.
Commissioner Casey's second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rose. Motion carries.
Which is another interesting one. Now that we've recommend, well, now that we, yeah, now that we've recommended denial to the board on the compact amendment. Zone change is not in compliance with the compact. So. Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Davis, again, I move to recommend denial to the Board of County Commissioners's project file Z C zero 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 two dash two two. Requesting zone change from Ag Forest ten to rural five, based on the following conclusion. Where the recommendation on the comprehensive plan was to deny the change from Ag Forest ten to rural. Therefore, the request for our five, rural five zoning is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on the evidence submitted to the time the staff report and testimony at the hearing, further. Further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in this hearing. And direct the planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Let the chairman sign and transmit all, to all interested parties, this action does not result in taking private property. Action could be taken, depending to obtain the zone change, is to file a new application. With the department and pursue remedies that may be applicable to Title sixty-seven chapters to five out of whole code.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to deny zone Z C zero 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 two dash two two. Zone change, Jamie and Doris Knower and Lester and Claudia Shaw, is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, I second that.
Commissioner Reed is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rose. Motion carries.
So, that was a double.
Okay. That's part of, uh, public hearing procedures tonight, we're gonna take a five minute break and we'll. Go to staff updates, members.
Around this file, go on the recommendation to the board. Okay.
Yeah, five minute break, okay.
Should probably everybody stuck around, this is amazing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I'm sorry about that.
That is, alright, great.
No.
Yeah, yeah, we're, what is it, eight?
Eight twelve.
Twelve, back in session. So, now's pretty, let's have some interesting ADU sizes.
Those first, those first.
Yeah, first, seven hundred square foot.
Woo, wow.
Well, yeah.
Those first, yeah. Yeah. One to nine nine.
So, why not nine hundred for five acres and twelve hundred if you had ten acres?
That's insane.
Well, I know, it's, we end up with this. And you read to me five acres.
That's right, so, I, I, I can't really have it. Reception, they have a twelve hundred on my five.
It comes, it comes back to, whether it's seven or nine, it's, it's hard to make it work.
My goodness.
And you've got, you've got some coming to you, some variances.
Other than for a very limited set of applications, single person.
A single mom who raised seven kids in a five hundred sixty square foot house without planning. That's right.
Five hundred square foot home, I don't know where my wife would live. Our first home was far enough.
Yeah, you know it. It's no longer accepted, it's just no longer accepted, I don't, you know, I don't care, who does? New couple, fresh out of high school, got married, they wanna have a, I don't know.
Okay, well, four thousand is strictly.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
But you have it anyway?
No.
No, 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 no. I, yeah, that's a, but, nine hundred? Where did nine hundred come from? That doesn't even work out framing wise.
Welcome though.
Yeah.
And so, and so, we, the interpretation of that is inside your.
Hmm, wow, wow. Yeah, yeah, at twenty square feet for the wall.
And so, we, and so, we end, we end up, it is really frustrating in this country. Because we, we make them, we make them wall it off, we make them, we make them, there are all different kinds of things to make it nine hundred.
And is that absolute living area, or is that?
Oh, we definitely can do for them, so.
But I mean, what doesn't count, the garage?
Yeah, garage doesn't count.
Uh, a little knockout shed for a water heater, uh. I'm trying to think of.
Mugging, living space.
Uh, a portico on the entry.
It's on the outside, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have a storage room, but it has to be access from the outside.
Okay.
Can't be accessed.
So, a, a front porch that is accessed from both the house and the outside, doesn't count? I don't have heat.
We're talking about front porch, we're talking about living.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So, you can have, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
You can have a porch.
So, it's the heated space, the heated space that's used for living, okay. Because again, nine hundred doesn't.
Yeah, it's not good for the American system too. Nine hundred.
Although, if you ask the owner, he gets six hundred Z for it.
That's why we have, you know, storage unit out.
Well, storage Idaho, you know, used to be Sagel, now it's storage.
Are people living in those?
I know, they sign them.
Yeah, because I tell you, in, in Southern California, that's a big thing.
Sure. When you sign, when you sign the lease, you sign with.
Yeah.
And that's how it works.
Yep. There are ways, there are ways around, there are ways around. I like this. I wouldn't want to live in my daughter's storage unit. It's ten by three. And eight foot dogs.
What else?
Stand up, might as well go live near, I have full penitentiary.
Any exciting building location permits for? Oh, I, yeah, you say them, oh, I, yeah.
Not the thinking. So, so, did you read the housing article in the paper yesterday or today?
No.
Yeah, which one? This just talked about it, and it mentioned, you know, the various cities doing things like that, it said, so you ponderate, no, I read that in the, in the.
The, 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 the need restricted, or the.
Right, right.
The tax restricted.
So, it referenced one little paragraph, it referenced, um, Coburn, was it Coburn Crossing?
Yes, the Coburn Crossing, ninety something units, yeah, forty.
And where, where is it exactly?
It's in, it's gonna be in the city itself.
Uh, there was three different ones that I wrote in that article, are you talking about the bougie one with many buildings?
I think so.
That one's on Highway ninety-five, right in front of the Ponderay.
Yeah, that's the one below the insurance.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, this is, this is the last thing, so, the Coburn, Coburn Crossing.
Okay, yeah, no, that one's north of Sandpoint, but it's not way out there, it's.
But it's, it's in the city, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sandpoint or Ponderay?
I believe it's Ponderay.
So. So, that must be north of, of the cutoff?
That could be Randy McDonald's, probably then.
Yeah, then the other one that's on ninety-five, that, above the creek, north of Kudney Cut off, and north of Schweitzer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's, there's G V Gs.
It must be one rate, it must be.
It's Ponderay.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the interesting thing, because, you know, here, I've been searching around the state to see what other counties are doing housing wise, and very little, because if you don't have services.
Yeah.
And you don't want to start dragging services miles and miles to provide identity stuff, then why? Maybe these planning acts says, don't do that.
Yeah.
Says, put identity in the cities. So, here we've got Ponderay and, and to some extent, Sandpoint, um, saying, okay, no, we're gonna. Then they're going through approvals.
We have those.
And it's taken, hopefully, gonna take some of the pressure off.
Yeah, well, and hopefully, the, Sandpoint will start to build houses next year.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, we're sitting in there now. Real view of eyesight.
Where the, where the college was?
Yeah, there's three in there now.
Can you, uh, sir, open it up round the next door, that is, I think it's, someone local is gonna do those, the, the other face, they're trying to open that ground up.
And what's Josh gonna do with his piece there on Boyer? I never did see a layout for that.
Oh, getting there, there, that's, um.
Old, uh.
Monogram homes are going to be building houses in there, and then the, the helicopter guys have their development behind that.
So, I mean, again, getting back to our domain, the county.
Yes.
Uh, I, again, searching around Idaho and search around other adjacent states, just not a whole lot can be done about the housing thing in the county incorporated. That must appear.
Right, and so, the product that the county's offering, give the larger, agricultural type product, five acre, ten acre. And so, we, we continue, I think we're at twenty-five, I don't think, so far this year. Um, I mean, we're still, and I can't figure out the subdivision process, there's seven or eight, perhaps.
Yeah.
And a couple of full blown subdivisions, um, maybe one. But there's still, um, the, the pressure that the county is still, it's, it's still there. There's still lots of building location permits, lots of. But again, there are larger lots, the five acre lots.
Yeah, not going for this.
I want to look at this area, the, the area where I came from, where the, the, where I go to children, became very expensive. Yeah, the kid drove a problem, versus here, just a small, little space. And now, they went through the roof, because everybody wants to live there, you know, this place, this place, and the label. Basically, that is, is, you know, label, label, there's just no house. Yeah. You know, pretty much done the same thing here.
In that way, for sure.
But I wonder, in the state, is, 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 has the state done any trailer parks? Modular home parks in any of the forty-seven counties in the state?
Not for, not for a long, long time.
You know, but again, you're, you're still trying to deal with service.
Yeah.
Well, also, the services that we need are water and sewer, which Ponderay could we have courtesy of the Ponderay Sewer District and City of Sand?
It's interesting, because around Sagel, you had Trail America, you have the one on the, on the, what you call, the screen pines or whatever, on the east side, right there, Sagel Road. They're not hooked up to the sewer. And they've got a service well that covers them all, and they do have water, but they're not hooked up on sewer, and I don't remember on either one of those working with that. It, it must be a common drain shit.
Yes.
But the one on the east side is pretty small.
Well, it is, but it's twenty, twenty, twenty-five sites.
I don't know. I, I've never.
And I've never, the other ones, the other three are bigger, the three of them there, on Dunne Club and on the highway. And they've got, you know, one of them, I know where that drain field is, and they're fortunate, they're sitting over there, so, it worked. But that isn't gonna happen everywhere, and those were absolute bona fide trailer parks, that's what they were for. And it used to be that, we had a certain percentage of those coming and going all the time, but boy, those, that, that no space available is on the Sagel Road side, has been there for what? At least three years now?
Nothing, no one wants to have that conversation, but that's, you know, we've been having section eight housing, which is affordable, real over areas.
Yeah.
Basically, that's it.
Yeah.
And we're just, we're, it's, it's, it's reality, the way it is, unless lumber prices come down and, yeah, ground comes down and you can turn things back thirty years, so maybe we can, it's not gonna work. You know, so, you know, our portable housing is gonna be apartments. Yeah, we'll be.
We saw, we saw, like those Saudis deal with China, they buy oil, yeah, dollars collapse, everything will be cheap.
Well, I know, but they were just, everybody says we gotta do something, and, yeah, we're, we're not gonna, we should need to change it to first time buyers.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, but affordable housing, pretty soon, you're gonna be living with your parents, isn't it?
Hey, they're seven hundred square foot ADU.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard. It is hard. Grandchild and two other adults.
Is that, was that eight hundred square feet, is that implying all livable area, such as if you had a full size basement underneath your house? So, nine hundred, so four fifty each floor?
Ooh, yeah. No, basement has its own entrance, and it's not.
Yeah, which would.
Have a bathroom in it, I mean, excuse me, could have a bathroom, but no cooking, so.
And then, yeah.
It's loose.
It's living, so, that's what I'm saying.
Assuming it's access from inside and heated.
Accessing it from inside? No, no, not inside, outside.
So, if there's no stairs?
Not part of it, if it's a separate access, then.
That's two A.
Yeah, you got a direction. Yeah, what you call it, storage? Water heater room.
If it wasn't heated.
He comes in our office for these conversations we have all day long.
Yeah, we sit.
On the phone, on email, in person.
And I've done that a little bit. It's not a bad exercise.
I don't know how the new chairman's gonna work on the, the con plan here. When we get to the housing.
No decisions made outside of a hearing, come on, there's no new chairman.
Yeah. We're gonna have to, obviously, that'll be a big topic. So, and again, housing element, yeah, you can't look at the county to address the portable house. It just.
No, that's, that's my basic conclusion.
And beyond, it, it amazes me that, that the homeless shelter is out in Pope, you know, and I asked them one day, uh, you have to transport it, right?
I know.
And they do, they're ready to transport actually the town.
It was available property, and, and you, and they just couldn't afford anything. They used to have a house, yeah, they used to have a house in Kudney, and it got sold out from under it.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of stuff, it's just, things change and it becomes unaffordable, you're trying to provide something that they can maintain as well, and that was a very affordable piece of property and situation, so, it, it worked, but it comes with the cost, you gotta transport, everything. Yeah, there, there was a guy who proposed a bus route from Para Montana into town, and he tried real hard, but it turned out he just couldn't pull it off, his investors wouldn't back it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that portable housing, it needs to be.
So, when we deal with the housing element, we've got to say that strong and clear. Just hold back.
And then, so, we've had somebody here from the news media, saying, you're reporting on portable housing.
She just did that.
We have to realize that first time buyers, unless David Harrett gets money, or obviously, you only really gonna be able to get in the home, this is, if they can find them, you know, a house under four hundred thousand. I think last week, there was maybe fifty homes on the MOS, and the average price was seven or eight hundred.
Yeah, but then, the other article, I don't think it was yours, I think it was one, it came from D C County, on the paper on the front page, you know, they quoted, you know, here's the, here's the median income, and here's what you need for today's houses, a hundred thousand, so a fifty-six thousand dollar median income, and you're gonna cut it, you can't do it. And then, they talked about the, the effects of that, that living in the basement, the kids coming back home when they're forty-five and all, that stuff, and it's true.
But some of the numbers.
So, you got that to report to?
No, I had it already there.
Okay.
Already there.
Some of the numbers you're gonna see in the MOS, you really have to take a look and question it, because they co-mingle different types of sales, and we had a waterfront that sold for over thirteen mil, and then we got another one that's over seven, several hundred, forty-five mil. You dump all that in, and it skews those numbers, so, you just have to take a look and almost segregate it out as to if you're looking in town properties and split those in the waterfront, but when they dump them all together, you get a mix.
Yeah, it probably doesn't make any sense at that point.
Pardon?
The numbers don't make any sense, it's not noise.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, the outliers driving.
If you did a full blown statistical analysis, you could throw those outliers.
Right, right, right.
Way out.
Which you should.
Way out.
Just to make a blanket statement, you can't, you just gotta go back in and see what was sagel. Carol Curtis here in town works for the group, they, they help people with the down, and then the people pay that down back at a very low interest rate, so a lot of these people get in with really no down.
So, is that the housing?
Which is great, and the homes have to meet FHA, um, I looked one and sold it that way, and it, it worked great for the people, and that's a good program.
Yeah, but that's gonna apply mainly to within incorporated cities, just because of it works better. I don't think you're gonna find too many rural, no. Okay.
So, it's, it's gonna be a hard.
Yeah.
To do, the other thing that we haven't talked about is cool housing, and that's kind of a communal type thing, you have your house, but your cooking facilities are in.
Yeah.
One, one area, it's, it's kind of a rec room type feel, everybody's together, you know, you know, we have all these methods, we've done, we've done one of those, down those, yeah.
Well, it's like the.
And it's like, almost like the, the C P we looked at last time for, um, bills.
Oh, right.
Where these were, these were kind of duplex, duplex, you know.
For the common area.
And they were just, they were like apartment, but they didn't have cooking facilities. Well, it's like, swipe it, just turn that nursing home into a house.
Yeah.
That's what it is, right? It's bedrooms and a big kitchen.
There's a lot of, um, veterans homes that are built that way.
Yeah.
No, I played in the room, but if you wanna cook, keep it down to the main, you got plates.
And out working, wondering out and about, what I'm amazed at is the people living RVs, so many of them, you know, it's just wheels, campers, whatever, um, what, it's astounding, it surprised me, and a lot of this rural property, the people went out of town. Another thing that surprised me, um, the state patrolman told me that they are so low staffed still, but the people, some of the, the officers are living in RVs because they can't afford a wage.
Wow.
So, now that, that we might be returning back to the mini housing? Yeah, that's the kind of home stuff, I mean, it's, you, you can do it, um, I, we talked a few folks about it, you, you're, you'll probably see a few more RV park, uh, applications over summer, but it's, it's still, it's all an expense, and the, the challenge is always gonna be the septic. And so, even though you can design a septic system up to twenty-five hundred gallons today, you still have to have the right soil types, right? And, and septic is always gonna be the. That is, we tend to the ponds and.
Set it them on, you know, it's gonna septic.
Yeah, yeah, and so, are RV parks doesn't fit in for a first time buyers, FHA ones, or modular homes, and. That's, I mean, that's, that's Stone Ridge operation, is the RV park in the dam out there, where you can buy the lot, the RV lot that has, you know, that has a pavilion and storage and outdoor cooking, or cooking stuff there, I mean, it's, it's a sweet old setup. Yeah. Two hundred grand's a little rough. And they only take tons of things, and they only take the five or five to six hundred. But I mean, there's, there are products around here that work, but again, there is.
Yep, definitely, they're, they're, they got their own ref room, and you had a lot of very small, some of them are selling for ninety to a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But they have outdoor kitchens, one's got a beautiful stainless steel one, you know, and it's enough to pour your RV in or travel to every.
Coach.
Yeah, there you go. You got your two hundred thousand dollar motorhome, probably.
That's, yeah.
So, I don't think, there are, there's lots of products out there, that's just inside, we, we really need to start meeting with the citizens, seeing what their capacities and, so their expansion plans. So, I know that, I know Southside's looking to expand, I know that, although they just did expand some, I, I don't know what that helped me with, and they should.
Yeah, it's, right.
And, and so, when this community upgrades their treatment plant, will they put the intersector line in the Sagel?
That's part of a study, the study that's going on now is to see how viable it is to both just serve the city with expansion or go regional. The, the terrible R word, nobody wants to face, but it, with that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
It just barks, say, yes. Consider it, see how it can be done, um, for the good of everyone, just because you need to have, when you're designing a tertiary treatment plant, it has to be fed year round. It can't be sporadic, it can't be too little, Dover's system is a good system, but it almost died probably five times in the first five years it was there, because it didn't have flow, they had to go truck stuff in, because it did, it was dying, literally. The, the, the culture was ineffective, wasn't treating the water. No. Yeah.
I'm gonna go, ready when you are, yeah. Well, turn the basketball beam on.
What time are we meeting?
Yeah, let's talk about.
Four thirty or twenty second.
Well, that's, uh, that's for a workshop.
We're on workshop Tuesday. So, the board is gonna interview you next week, Monday, Thursday, we set up some towns, you should be getting a meeting up to, to come in with the board, uh, and they'll, they'll get that committee's.
We gotta meet with the board?
Yeah, they wanna meet with everybody.
Really?
Mm-hmm, alright, okay.
Tell them they should come up on Tuesday.
Yeah, this could be a good chance for you to meet. So, they're gonna, are they meeting with all just one board member and some of your, your staff and somebody else? Yeah, and the board.
The whole board?
The whole board, yeah.
Okay, wow, they got to devote that much time to it.
They are.
Wow, well, good, thank you, glad they are. In the meantime, I looked through the planning zone commission bylaws.
Yes.
Run, obviously, that has to be adjusted, but the present bylaws have not one word about workshops.
Right, and they should.
Should, so, does the department wanna take a stab at that, or?
We'll definitely get something prepared, and, and once the committee, you know, commissions are formed, we'll send all that, that reading stuff out to that first meeting, okay, for that first meeting, for both the planning and this one commission, we'll send all that stuff out to, and let you guys look all that stuff up. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to complete the order, that's about bylaws on the chairman.
Yeah, it's gonna be a procedure in the end.
And then we'll have some training, uh, you'll probably be there with train on all the new laws and.
Did.
Statute stuff.
A while back, we watched a portion of Jerry Mason's training.
You know?
Was that the most recent one? I'd heard that there's a, a two year old one there. On, on planning commissions.
Yeah, it's a on planning commission. I have to look, the last one I watched was a. It's on YouTube.
It's quite old.
Yeah, the one where it's in the city.
Yeah, it's in, it's like. I watched that. It was in the Marsin, not Marsin, but.
So I forgot where it was.
Yeah, it's down, down southeast. Um, I just wonder if he's put anything out. In light of all the changes and all the pressures and all this whole stuff and, I mean, it could be.
I don't know if somebody will report it. Some terms that.
Oh, I'm sure there is, but Jerry's still. You know, he's, he's still active, he's still, uh, keeping up with things and I.
Although.
He's in post walls, I mean, well, he's returning for post walls, but I don't, I figure he lives. From that.
Okay, oh, he's still around.
And if we could get him here or something, or zoom or something. It's just. Lots of. All these questions about. You know, yes, Bill has provided us with the information on zone changes and spot zones and everything, but there's, there's more to it. There's just more. Right, these, these questions that we keep coming up with, what's the value and strength of a comprehensive plan in and of itself and then its map and its descriptions and its text? Same with owning, just go through that and really, really. You can wrangle its neck and bring it out.
So.
Oh, it's.
If you wanna interview me, it has to be next week. That's what I said, we'll be next week. Monday, because I'm out of here.
Monday?
Monday or Thursday.
Oh.
So I'm gonna call or? Yeah, that, yeah, that's all I need now. Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna play with some time.
Cause I gotta go. South.
And I've got a.
For a couple of cock conferences. Isn't that boring? So.
Yeah, I've got some early.
You know, appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Of course, Doc, you, you still gonna call around?
No. No, I got cancer. I mean, I pulled myself off and my wife's gone. But I'm not calling. There's too many things happening.
All right, she wants to go catch the end of the ball. Okay, so it was made, continues at four thirty on twenty second of March.
Second of March.
Maybe in the fifteen hundred, Highway two seven, out of Old First Ward Conference.
Third floor.
Over upstairs, we're on third floor, county commissioner's office. It's eight forty.